Seven o'clock, we call this special work session meeting. August fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen order, we do have forum. From the forum, individuals may address the city council on items on or not on the agenda. Speakers are required to state their name and address for council workers and limit the remarks to three minutes or less. Speakers are requested to frame their comments around items that hold within the authority of the city council, generating the city council not take official action on the item discussed at this time, or may place the matter, or the item on file, make the matter under advisement, refer the matter to the staff or committee for future report, or direct the matter to be placed on an upcoming agenda. Anyone wish to speak? Go ahead.
Michael Nelson from eleven oh five Fifth Avenue Southeast here in Little Falls. And as of September of last year, I had found that a chicken moved into my backyard. You know what you where it came from? It just kind of showed up when I was going out to feed the crook. And so I've gotten feeding these chickens, saying that I feed the birds, I provided a little box for them, saying that I've covered houses for the wrens and everything. I couldn't let it in the house or in the basement when it's twenty-five below because then it comes as a pet, which is illegal. Okay. I do not think necessarily chickens should be illegal to keep them town. I would like to see people use our restrictions on it, no more than fifteen birds, if you got, house has to be fifty feet off the road, airport's behind the house, you know, whatever restrictions it takes. I do not see a problem with having chickens in town. Chicken, urban chickens are allowed in New York City. You know, in Manhattan Island, they have the coops up on top of the buildings. And this county, Morrison County, being one of the highest welfare counties, per capita welfare counties in the state, the advantage some people can get from having a few chickens, okay, a little bit of feed, possibility of selling four dozen eggs at the end of the week or something to make the difference between making the most rent. I don't say the chickens do any harm. We've had this chicken in our yard since, like I say, September of last year. There have been absolutely no complaints. There's one guy who lives in, I'm up by the high school, and there's a big yellow apartment building behind us. There's one gentleman who lives back there that I know well, I worked with, who is scared to death of chickens. And he has posted on Facebook, he has had to have his wife get out of bed and come out and scare the chicken away from his car so he can get in his car and go to work. But, but he has not requested me to do anything about the chicken, he thinks it's great fun. And with this council, I don't know, these people that has passed in the past, and be ruled by the mayor, I'm kind of hoping the council will do the same again, and we have a mayor who probably will be ruled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin Hassel, eight oh seven First Street Southeast. To start off, Mr. Mayor, I would like to request that you appoint a person of color to this vacant seat that Keith Silverdick is no longer on the planning commission. We have a city that's diverse, and so far, there's only white people on all of the committees. So I would humbly suggest you seek out a person of diversity that are in this city. I am in favor of urban chickens as well, for a lot of the same reasons this gentleman From Bruce Fine, if you don't think you're paying an obscene price for a Democratic-Republican military-industrial counterterrorism complex, consider the following. The United States government could have distributed two point three million, million, to each American citizen if it had refrained from spending seven trillion on wars tantamount to fool's errand in Afghanistan and Iraq alone since two thousand and one. From Colleen Rowley, it's important, she's former FBI, it's important to note that the lowered standard for use of deadly force by police to mimic our preventative preemptive wars and drone assassinations, the militarization of the police, and fear-triggered fingers of some military wannabes in the police departments, taking their cue from and seeking hero status just like American sniper, are just one side of the terrible blowback from our post-nine-eleven wars in our increasingly militarized American culture necessary to keep perpetual wars going. The other side of this violent blowback manifests in the steep escalation to the point where almost two to three senseless mass shootings are being reported per week, many by mentally ill or troubled people, especially included PTSD-afflicted vets, who have come to believe that shooting as many people possible, mostly strangers, as possible at a school, church, theater, or other public place, will somehow solve their personal problems or give meaning to their troubled lives. In the aftermath of each mass killing, police unsuccessfully launch a search for motives and try and vain to categorize the shootings as hate crime, domestic or international terrorism, serial shooter, the one who has shot seven passengers since March, or simply senseless active shooters. But these shooters, including the recent one in Orlando, are mostly just taking their cue from a government via politicians of both war parties, which has come to adopt and constantly promote war as its answer. Of course, in these useless endeavors to find motives as if any real, really, anyone can really make sense, no one remembers MLK Junior's simple explanation how violence begets violence, not when President Obama accepted the Nobel Peace Prize by disagreeing with Martin Luther King saying that he had it all wrong, that he fights wars as the means to bring legitimacy, human rights, peace, and love.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Lang, and tonight I'm representing CHS and Gabriel's Hospital. And I wanted to address the council, just to inform you on what we're doing about prescription drug abuse in our community. Last week, I know Greg and I were at the county commissioners meeting and addressed them, and was recognized for receiving the Rural Health of the Year Award. So just to kind of backtrack a little, in two thousand and fifteen, at the beginning of the year, we were, the hospital was awarded a three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar grant. Our focus was prescription drug abuse. And since then, we've been very successful with the help of many people in the community, particularly the Little Falls Police Department, the Morrison County Sheriff's Department, the Stand Up For You Coalition, and I thank the council for putting forth that social post ordinance is a part of all our substance abuse issues. And being a part of the Stand Up For You Coalition, I had the opportunity in February to do some congressional visits, and I got a one-on-one with the congressman, believe it or not. So Congressman McNohan, I was telling him about how much money we were saving by reducing prescription drug abuse by case managing it. And Coperns Pharmacy, another member of the Stand Up For You Coalition, or another member of the Morrison County Task Force, has been really helpful in giving us data, so I could show that to Congressman Nolan. And he not only wanted to fund past our SIM grant, he also wanted to lead our project. So we had a chance to go to Washington DC, myself and our president of our hospital, along with Dr. Devine and Dr. Bell, and Jason McDonald from the sheriff's office, and Ronda Buckley from the clinic, and we got to fill the room with offices, senate offices, and congressmen, and there were standing room only in this crowd to talk about what Little Falls is doing to reduce prescription drug abuse in our community. So with that, Congressman Nolan is coming to our community forum on October third, and Chief LaFunk from Stand Up For You, and Ann March and I are heading this committee, and so we want to invite all of you to attend on October third. There'll be a legislative panel, a healthcare panel, a prevent and treatment panel, and it'll be a whole day of activities at the ballroom. So mark that day on your calendar, and make sure to come and talk with the congressman. Nolan will be there in person, Amy Klobuchar is also going to be there, or a representative, I haven't confirmed of her schedule yet, so. And I just wanted to say that in the last four months of the claims that, it showed that with a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant, which we haven't even used all of it, that we have saved two point three million dollars in medical assistance claims in this community, just by working hard, case managing, and helping people who are addicted in this community get better and get off hook.
Thanks Kathy.
You're welcome.
Anyone else wish to speak? Very now, we'll move on to regular council items. Urban chickens, continuing from eight one.
First on the agenda, we've got the urban chickens, we've heard some comments this evening. We also have the original ordinance that was back in, I don't remember when it was, in two thousand and eleven, that was, that was be ruled by the mayor, in front of you to, I guess, read through and look at it. From there, it's up to the council whether or not any action is taken on it. But I think if we decide to do anything on it, we'll want to definitely review it to see how it, or how it meshes up with the rest of our ordinance, because a lot has changed since two thousand and eleven. So I guess it's open for discussion on the council level, on which direction we'd like to take.
Anyone?
I guess people that tell us what they thought, I've only heard from two or three people, but they were all in favor of it.
I heard Mike was in the store, and he had to talk about it, Brad was nearby. So he came over, and I had one phone call this weekend against him, saying that he didn't shut down chickens in the city limits. I did have talked to the previous city clerk in Motley, and they had passed it for the chickens, I submitted to this last meeting. And then, not long after that, somebody came before the council and wanted sheep, and they passed an ordinance to have sheep, because there was a house within the city that had grandfathered in, had been a farm, and they had sheep, so they allowed sheep. And so they said, don't do it. And as before, my concern is who's going to monitor, who's going to enforce it. That falls upon our police department, as we hear a lot of good things they are doing, fighting real issues that face our community, that would be a concern of mine. We have problems with blight, and trying to take care of all of those things, and we haven't had the time keeping up with that, all of that and everything else, all that's being reported. So my concern would be, who's going to enforce it, how are we going to go about this, and are we going to get something out? That's it.
I've not had any calls relative to this, but I've kind of expecting some since we announced two weeks ago that if anyone had any feelings that they should let us know. I understand that there are chickens within the city now, but people that I have talked with in a variety of areas, the overwhelming response that I have received is a shake of the head and say, I cannot understand why they're reconsidering that issue. So I, I believe it's a sleeping dog that should be left alive, and I personally would be moving against that.
I went out and spoke to my neighbors, they're all in favor or didn't care, but if we were to do something with this, it will cost us money, and I think it should go towards buying for a fee or a permit to raise these chickens. If we're going to have so many monitor it, that would have to be put into that to pay for it, which could get pretty pricey. So it's like you say, we have many issues in this town right now, where we're scraping the bottom of the barrel to get money to take care of. Adding one more thing would mean we're taking away from somewhere else. So if we were to do this, the fee would have to cover the cost, monitor, and take care of it, as far as I'm concerned.
I had one phone call, it was basically against it, they didn't want, I spoke with some of my neighbors where I live, and the majority of them said they were not in favor of it, in favor of it either. The main concern was, again, one, who's going to control it, who's going to take care of it, and it came down to the policemen doing it. They all felt that the police have much more important things to do for our city than to check to see how many chickens are in the coop or whatever. And I agree that it's going to cost money. We pay seven hundred bucks a month for animal control for the, for the dogs, you know, are we going to have to have another person that would pay seven hundred bucks a month to go out and check and make sure all the chickens aren't where they're supposed to be? The other thing was, two, the, you know, how many would be qualified in, how many could you have? Concern also was, what about animals, skunks, weasels? I mean, that's a draw for those kinds of animals. Also the disposal of manure, you know, if you've got some people that of course are going to be very careful about everything, and do people take care of it the right way, that you're going to have others that are not, and like, who's going to take care of it if that manure smell starts walking over into my bedroom that night? So those are some of the comments that I got, and I spoke to.
Anyone else? I haven't had no one in favor contact me this time, like last time I had three or four, when it was passed the first time, but everyone I've talked to, this time around, it's all been negative. So I guess without, we've had two or three people that come up in front of the council here that's asked for it to be revisited, in favor, obviously. And all these people, you know, that think that this is going to be a way for somebody to make some money. The restrictions in here in the coop, last time, to build a coop, you're looking at five to six hundred bucks to build a chicken coop, it takes a lot of eggs to get your money back. By the time you do that, and you buy your feed, and you buy your chickens, and can properly dispose of, Mr. Canapla said, to get rid of the manure, or compost it, or use it in your garden, you know, it's going to, drive by a chicken bar, what do they smell like? You know, and you're quarter mile away, and you can smell, and what's it going to be when it's, you're sitting on your patio in your backyard, and your neighbors got ten or twelve, or whatever chickens you have that's going to be fifty feet away, what are you going to smell all the time?
Well, like I said, I, I saw one in operation in Denver, and I think it was six chickens, and there was no smell at all, I mean, there was, you know, so I think people's concerns are somewhat unfounded, you know, I mean.
Well, no, I guess I grew up with chickens in the chicken coop, I grew up on a country at farm, and I know what kind of mess chickens can make, and don't take long on a ninety-degree day when it's humid up, or chicken manure to linger.
Well, how many did you have?
Twenty-five.
I grew up in Denver, it's a much drier climate, and I think that helps to limit the smell a lot, because it just dries out, you know, I think our community would make it more of a challenge.
Thing is, in winter time, it's going to be a big issue.
Well, obviously, at one time this body was for it, with the exception of the mayor, so I don't, I don't know what changed.
Four was in the last ordinance, and I think you're going to have, if it's as small as four, you're not going to have as much problem with this amount, because four chickens just, it takes years to smell.
The last time we went through, I think it was Mr. Boyham and I, we're the only council member sitting on it then, so it's a whole new council, you guys will vote what you think is the best way this time around. I'm, I could live with it, or I could live without it, and I'm just saying what the people around me said, they, my neighbors were in favor, coupled in here, otherwise. So it's like, well, I'm not going to sit here and say there's a groundswell of support and advocacy for chickens, I mean, the ones that are for it certainly are passionate about it, but not even the word on.
Well, since we talked about it last meeting, and said that we wanted to hear from the public, obviously our ratings are down, so either not many people watched it, or there wasn't a lot of big issues, because I made a brief, and I would come talk to us, and I can have, other than running into Mike in front of the store, I had one phone call, and I did have one person, or some of that, I had one person that was against it, so it was a lot of two against and one.
What do we want to do? Want to move forward with it?
It sounds like kind of mixed across the table, so.
Well, the thing is, if we're going to give it to our attorney to review, it's going to cost us money, if we can do nothing with it, there's no sense to send it, to vote it down.
It sounds like the ground's well around the table.
I'm not detecting a discussion that has heard that everyone's in favor for it, it seems like it's a little stronger against it, so I would make the recommendation not to send it any further.
That must be a lot more people saying there's a problem.
Something that can be revisited later, if there is a lot of support for it, it will come, but at this time, it isn't that heavy.
Memorial Bridge, Trump Highway twenty-seven, rail crossing.
Yeah, in front of you this evening, we have a proposal that I requested from S E H to look at the Trump Highway twenty-seven and railroad crossing. As you may recall, our twenty twenty-five projected around that time, Remina is looking at replacing the twenty-seven bridge. We've had discussions with them in regards to what that may ultimately look like, and their, their responses, it would look essentially exactly the same as it is today, except it would be a new bridge. After we've had the, the surveys back for the comprehensive plan, a number of the individuals indicated that the rail crossing at twenty-seven is a concern to them, and so we started looking into, well, what options are involved there? Once we started pulling up data, it became, became pretty evident. Included in this, in the packet tonight, you know, there's two, two lists. The first list is the, from the Public Highway Rail Crossing, it's from the FRA, the Federal Rail Authority, it's the list of rail crossings in Minnesota and their predicted accident rate, accident rates. Our crossing is number two in the state of Minnesota in terms of likelihood for, for an accident. The second list that we have is high priority crude rail crossings. As we know, crude oil goes through the, through that rail quite a bit, and we're number four on that list in terms of priority. So we have a number two and a number four on the list, neither one are necessarily in our favor in terms of what we want to see, but it would be in our favor in terms of possibly getting grants for, for something at that location. So tonight, we are going to be asking the council to authorize S E H to prepare a feasibility report to look at alternates for that location in terms of a grade separated crossing. We don't know what alignment we'd be looking at or anything like that, that would be part of this, this study, as well as, you know, where the beginning and end points would be for it. MINDOT, again, has stated that if we want anything different there, that we would have to find the extra funds. And so this will be the first step in finding those, those funds in order to make something different happen. One of the, well, some of the main concerns that we have with, revolve around emergency services, both police, fire, emergency ambulance, that type of stuff. We, I had one individual come in talking about, we don't have any ambulance service on the west side, which is true, we do, we, full cross is the ambulance service, but they don't have a, a building on the west side, and so, I mean, that's a concern that, you know, just as a citizen or even an employee here, what would be a concern of mine is the various emergency services serving both east and west, and this would, if we had a grade separated crossing, then that would take that, that equation.
Well, it's a definite problem, I was talking to Jeremy earlier today, I ran into him, and if you cross the west side and come here and you miss the train, you're more likely going to hit one when you're going back, it's getting a fifty-fifty shot nowadays. As far as ambulance service, sheriff or police, if they're trying to get to that side of town to take care of things, fire department, at least there's a fire truck in that side. I don't know if there's enough people that can man, man it, but we do have to consider somehow coming up with some kind of plan to make it safer for the people on the west side. It wasn't that many years ago, there was a plan, what to do over there, and if you would see what the Minnesota Department of Transportation came up with, if we were to put a bridge that lifted up and over the track, you wouldn't see Our Lady of Lord's Church, we'd lose our post office, the west side, the whole stretch in there, you wouldn't have a business left, they would all go, S A, every single one of them. It would change the whole appearance of the river. One of the things we have going for this town is the ability to drive over that bridge and look out on the river, and see the dam on the other side. It's a whole lot better if you're at ground level versus if you're way up above. Safety wise, that is a concern, are there other things we could do and make sure there aren't going to be any accidents? There is a concern about the petroleum. The petroleum production is going to be dropping, because right now they're starting to slow down the Dakotas, sending people home, they're not going to be moving as much as they anticipated, so that's another one we're going to check into, to see if maybe this is a temporary thing, but anyway, there is a concern about the safety.
I agree, and the backup too, the construct, the congestion of the cars when the trains are going through, both on the, on the west side and on the, on the east side of the tracks. My question to you, Greg, is, that's a pretty heavy chunk of change to a feasibility report. If we do this report and we come up with it, MINDOT can say, no, we don't want to do it, right?
They're.
And if they, if they do that, then we're, we're basically out that, out that money.
I'm doubtful that they will, and the reason I say that is because with the number two and the number four on our list, that's going to put us high. that's going to put us high in the priority in terms of giving grant funds. Now, MINDOT is not necessarily going to put in extra money. They've already said they've allotted X number of dollars for the replacement of the bridge. If they, if we want something different than what's there now, we're going to have to find the funds to make up that difference.
But MINDOT then isn't, isn't that concerned about the safety of the people of this town then, right? If they're, if this is the amount of funds, if they know that what they're projecting of, of doing is not going to solve the safety issues that we have here, it seems to me that, you know, why should we have to be the one that cops up all this money to provide the safety when isn't the Minnesota Department of Transportation supposed to provide the safety for?
It is, but if you look at their list, we're number four on their list for priority. But, they usually don't, they're, they're constrained by budgets just like everybody else. So they usually don't put this in, in priority until somebody keeps pushing them and saying, this needs to be addressed. One of the high points or hot buttons that Governor Dayton was pushing is rail safety, especially at, at oil crossings, which is one of our crossings. So I believe that that would put us up higher on the list as well as the accident predictability. One of the reasons I solicited from S E H is because they went through something very similar to this in Sauk Rapids when they put that bridge in through there. They, I didn't want to have to have somebody recreate the wheel that was already created. So, they've already done the river crossing with the rail crossing with the downtown. That's already been in place. If you go to Sauk Rapids and you look at, at their downtown, it's a vibrant downtown. They've got a lot of things going for them and that's what I would like to see brought here as well. They've already got the experience handling the rail, the river and the downtown, so they can take those experiences and go from there.
How many accidents have we had there, per se, in the last ten years?
Based on this number two list here, we had one in twenty-eleven, we had one in twenty-fourteen, and we just had one in twenty-sixteen, which was a couple, almost a month ago, for that one hit the rail over there. So we've got, you know, prediction rating of a point one four nine, which will increase after the recent accident we had this year.
Those three accidents in ten years, the speed has been dropped down there to current speed. I don't have anything previous to twenty-eleven that's as far back as they go, so I don't know how many we have in ten years.
The speed of what?
The trains, they used to go faster.
Well, it's not going to contribute to the accident. I mean, the train's going forty or eighty and the car misses the tracks, it's going to hit the drain.
Well, the arms and everything, you see a train a lot better going at twenty than you will at forty. Why do you think, you know, you're in that business, why wouldn't you think that would add to it?
People miss trains all the time, doesn't matter how fast they are, they can be stopped on the tracks.
Then why do you think they, why did they drop the train speed down to begin with?
Thinking it has more to do with the train itself than it does the intersecting track.
But the other thing is, the train speed is, is dictated by curves coming out of the, the trestle, the train trestle there. They've got a smaller reverse curve in through there. D N S F actually last year, here probably did a bunch of work in through there. They tried to correct some of that because it was a, a right and then a quick left coming back. They tried to smooth that out a little bit just because of that, that issue. But it is still at, at thirty miles an hour is what they go through their, their downtown.
And the second change we had there is we got rid of the check train whistle. Is that contributing to it because people don't hear the train coming?
Doesn't occur well.
No.
Of course, when you've got red lights flashing and arms blocking the highway, chances are pretty good whether or not you hear it, not that big a factor.
The three accidents that happened, it's dangerous for some reason. What are they? I mean, there's, there's trains all over the place. You go through randomly, you go through little falls, go through, if speed doesn't have anything to do with it, why aren't we putting bridges over all of them?
I think it has something to do with traffic falling, the amount of cars that go over it, obviously. Pretty highly traveled road.
Well, I think one of the biggest crossings dangers we're concerned with now is affecting the oil demands of derailments. And if you derail at twenty, you're going to have a bigger mess than a derailment at sixty, or the other way around. But it's a case where I, I, I question this business of overpass difficulty. I don't believe you need a half mile approach to that bridge on a thirty mile limit. We're, we're doing it with a state highway with a tremendous amount of traffic and I don't, I don't see where it would hurt the post office a bit. And I really have trouble seeing why that bridge could not come down in time for that stoplight.
They, they do have a plan in place because this issue was brought up, I think about when I came on the council. There was a big discussion and MINDOT actually presented a plan and it showed pretty much what it would wipe out.
Yeah, but, you know, I'm, I'm not convinced that MINDOT has treated Little Falls very well over the years. As you look at that intersection by Walmart, that's horrible. People that come in off Highway ten, traveling through, they stop at McDonald's or someplace for lunch, try to get back onto Highway ten from there. I mean, it's a circus, it's a mess going around there. And then you've got the U-turn situation and you've got that little arrow sign that over your face. And, and then you go talk to the radio shack folks. It's, it's, it's not always been a good situation. And, and as we look at this thing, Little Falls is not divided by the river. Little Falls is divided by a railroad. And, and as you look at that situation, I have real trouble in seeing why there couldn't be a little creativity involved in working toward the possibility of an overpass.
Well, and when they started that years ago, there, there wasn't oil running like there is now. So my guess, a lot of it was safety and the fact that it backed up traffic for three miles, full corrections. And when schools let out, there's traffic all the way up past Goldman's path in at certain times because of trains and, and other issues. And on the west side, I've seen them pass all the way past Pineville Park. It's, my guess is a lot of it was for convenience of, of people in this community, their time given back and forth, and also those emergency people or settlers. That's always been a favorable issue and will continue to be, we'll have to fight that.
The, the big issue last time was, is the slope for the handicapped accessibility for a wheelchair to walk and down. That's where they were pulling their specs from without doing a switchback. That's when they figured a grade separation to get over the tracks was a single slope versus going with a switchback. Because your pedestrian slope and your road pitch is totally different, great, right?
Yeah, if I can touch on that, there's really two factors that they have to look at and I apologize for the small picture here. I suspect when MINDOT originally looked at the, the bridge, they looked at the larger girders which would span the Mississippi River. The larger the girders, the longer your span can be. But if you continue that size over the railroad tracks, right near the railroad tracks, this is actually the Sauk Rapids Bridge, it actually increases where the deck with road surface is going to be at. The higher the road surface, the farther you would have to go. By switching to a different style of bridge structure, you can lower that, that, that road surface. With preliminary numbers and obviously the, none of this is set in stone as far as how far its spans would be or anything like that, the only numbers that we know right now is kind of the distance that are required from the railroad tracks. But, looking at the preliminary numbers, we'd be able to take off from the post or the abutment right next to the post office and stay exactly the same, go up as we're going across the, the river, go over the tracks and then switch to this style right at the railroad tracks, then come back down to the tie-in point would likely be Lumber Drive. So we wouldn't have to change anything in terms of Lumber Drive. It would all occur over the railroad tracks as well as the Mississippi River in that first block on the west side is where it would, that's where the changes would occur.
I think maybe you should have MINDOT, you should get a hold of them and they have guidelines they go by as far as grade and everything, you know, a state highway has to have a certain grade to it.
It'd be well and better if the city engineer would have your grades there.
They're going to, they're going to have, they're going to have to be the ones, it's their road, comply with what they want, we'll have to go and discuss it with them. Take a look at the old plan and ask why everything was the way it was. And if it's still the same, in their mind, still has to be built the same, we can't decide here how high or what kind of bridge to put in there and stuff because this is all up to them.
If they didn't really want to do it last time, they didn't spend much time putting together a plan or thinking of alternatives. They presented something that they thought you wouldn't like, so you'd say no.
Well, I guess, just have them come back in and do the same thing. I mean...
They've already told us that if we want anything different, we have to find the funds to make it different.
And, and what are those funds, roughly?
I, I don't have those numbers yet. We're talking millions.
Five, ten million a month, friends, what?
Probably in that, that realm, yes. I mean, I can find out exactly how much Sauk Rapids one costs, but I don't have those numbers in front of me.
But it, it's important for us, if we do want to seek out additional funding resources, that we have the information that's going to say, this is what we need to do to make this better, to make this safer, to make this work in our community because we have done the due diligence to, to figure out what the alternative is. MINDOT is just going to go with the most cost effective means that they have within their budgets.
Yes.
If we don't have the information available and get the input from the public eventually too, to, to tell MINDOT, say, this is not going to work for us, this is, we need something better, then we can take that to the state, we can take that to the federal transportation authorities too in N A S M for the resources to help us, support us in getting this, this issue addressed and information.
Sauk Rapids get a pretty good grant?
Yes, it did.
Will S E H be doing this independently or will be in conjunction with MINDOT?
They'll have to work with, with MINDOT. You know, the feasibility report would be the start of it, to say what we can do. And then they'd be working with MINDOT in terms of what's going to be allowed. Because ultimately, you're right, it is MINDOT's bridge, but there are design standards that everybody has to follow. And it's not just a MINDOT standards, there, there are nationwide standards that, that everyone has to follow. So, they would definitely be working in conjunction with them to make sure that they're on board with what's being proposed.
So the twenty-eight thousand, twenty-nine thousand budget for it or not?
That is not a budgeted number at this point. It was something that, after we started reviewing the comp plan survey, there were a number of individuals that indicated that the rail crossing was something that they wanted to see addressed.
Is there any chance of getting money back from MINDOT if they go with that design?
Not MINDOT, but you'd probably get some funds through, through the grants.
Since this is a safety issue, any chance of NJPA or anybody helping?
In this, in this room, uh...
Probably not.
Probably not, unless we were going to be doing some, some sort of innovation activities or after, you know, beyond the bridge development, then possibly, but everything that happens at that level needs to have original impact too. So granted, this, I can argue this having a regional impact, but others may not see it that way.
I think the main concern of the public when they put that on the list was prepared of waiting for the train. There's plenty of places in Minnesota where you have to wait a long time for trains or any kind of traffic. I mean, there's a reason we live in this area because we don't have to wait for as much traffic. You live in the cities, they laugh at us if we say our traffic is backed up for three, four or five blocks because they go through this every day and they're not putting a lot of expense to it. What I'd like to see is maybe a study, if this is a hotspot and it is not safe, it'd be cheaper to buy that building out on a corner. The reason why this is happening is because they can't see around that warehouse that's on the southwest side there. Clear that out. It'd be a whole lot cheaper than trying to put a big bridge across there affecting all the businesses and stuff, so, I mean, there's alternatives.
It's not going to get an ambulance across there any faster.
Well, then maybe we need to put some ambulances on that side.
We're not in the ambulance business right now.
We should be, we should be. I mean, if they're providing a service for Little Falls and we, we have this group, maybe they should think about it. Just like, you know, we put a fire station on that side for that reason. Maybe we should have an ambulance, talk to...
Go put a police department over there too.
Maybe.
The bridge is looking pretty cheap attending that for Harrison.
Well, you'll see. It's set down, the bridge isn't as cheap as you think.
So MINDOT, are they aware that we're not, as a city, that we're not happy with the plan that they are proposing for?
Yes. There's been discussions with MINDOT, I read some back from, I think it was nineteen eighty-one, where discussions have been ongoing.
Discussions, discussions between who?
Between City of Little Falls and MINDOT staff. And now was...
Would a, not to interrupt you Greg here, but I'm just, I'm just looking at, at spending this money wisely, this is a chunk of change for a survey that, that may or may not get done. And I just don't, I mean, is there a way, like, you know, could we, you know, do a petition? Have all the residents in Little Falls sign a petition and send it to the governor and send it to, to MINDOT saying that we, you know, you need to come up with a better solution than what you, you currently are presenting to us? That might be a, a cheaper way of starting. We've got ten years to figure this out.
We've got ten years and that's kind of what prompted the discussion. We've got an opportunity where they're going to spend money to fix that bridge.
Right.
Why not take advantage of using some of those funds to get a better product in the end? They're open and receptive to that, but they're only willing to spend X number of dollars that they have budgeted for replacing that bridge.
Maybe they could use their money a little more wisely and creatively to solve our problem.
Well, this is on the regular agenda, so...
This is, this is on the regular agenda.
Discussion on the regular agenda. We will, anyone else got anything under, other needs to be addressed? Now, we'll take a five minute recess and get back to the regular meeting.